All right. Good morning, everybody. It's 7:30. Thank you very much. As you can probably tell already, the microphones are -- we've had some requests to tape this presentation by Rick Rosenberg, who Rachel will introduce you all to shortly. And so when we get to the questions part, please help us by using the microphone so that people that are interested and view the tape that we'll post online can do that and hear the questions because they're all important. Welcome. And before I have asked Rachel to introduce Rick, I do want to recognize our Board of Mayor and Alderman. I'm not going to introduce each one of them. Mayor Moore, Vice Mayor Matt Brown, and everybody else. And thank you all.
Okay. You sent your first to introduce it.
Thank you all. And I know that you all know them. And also Dwight Geiser, the chairman, and Alan Thompson, the vice chairman of our Development Services Advisory Commission, and the commissioners that are here too. So, you know, for those of you that interact with those two groups, you know them well, and we really appreciate you being here because I was reminded that I started with the city about 18 years ago and shortly thereafter started meeting with development professionals. Many of you have been part of those. We were meeting monthly, then COVID came and moved to quarterly, but we still meet on issues importance for building this great place we call Franklin and making a community a choice for families and businesses. And that's what brings us together today to talk about public improvement districts, funding infrastructure. How can we do that efficiently, together in partnership with the private development community? On the same token, we've also been talking at the same time, and I'm still looking for ideas for implementing road impact fees. There's some overlap here, but not every development we're going to face in Franklin is going to be eligible to be a part of a public improvement district as we go forward. So the board has asked us to come back with ideas. If we don't have time to talk yet today, which we probably don't, I've been talking with Rick already, and he has a lot of information to share. I'll be setting up another meeting shortly thereafter to focus solely on implementing development impact fees, specifically road impact fees. So keep that in mind, and, you know, if we don't get to it today, we'll be back at it within a few weeks. I do also want to just highlight that you may had heard when we were going through the budget process, our Board of Mayor and Alderman had funded us or actually tasked the Development Services Advisory Commission to develop a survey that we can send out to stakeholders regarding the effectiveness of our development services. And that is, they've been working on that with a consultant from Thrivence. That will be going out about August 1st. So just an FYI, when -- share it with whoever is interested in investing in our community, whether it's citizens, design professionals, or contractors, developers. We want to get input because that's what we think keeps us, makes us a good place to do business and again, make an investment. So that'll be helpful, and there'll be more to come on that. So with that, Rachel Blackhurst from our NIAAP group in greater Nashville, and Rick Rosenberg, the NIAAP group has engaged Rick Rosenberg. He's from the Development Planning and Financing Group, DPFG, for those of us that like acronyms. And he has about 16 years or so with them, working and helping put together public improvement districts and financing models that allow developments to come to fruition. Appreciate Rachel and the NIAAP group for engaging Rick over the last year. And as many of you know, the Board of Mayor and Alderman have listened to our bond council and financial managers in February and just recently, a month ago. And now we have Rick coming forward, and Rachel had volunteered his services and time with us this morning. He has about a 20 to 30-minute presentation. Allow him to get through it, and then the rest of the time will be to facilitate dialogue. So with that, Rachel?
Sure. Well, you have -- it was a great introduction, but like Vernon said, we NIAAP engaged Rick about a year ago, and it's taken just about that amount of time for me to wrap my head around what all is involved with public infrastructure districts. So I will suggest in his presentation, please afterward ask all the questions because there's a lot to it. I want everyone to leave today with some clarity, not confusion on this, but we're very excited to have Rick here and to dive into this.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Vernon. Thank you all very much for coming out this morning for the chance to talk hopefully a great back and forth on these improvement districts, special financing districts, ways to more efficiently take care of infrastructure. And the reality is that they have to be done in a way that benefits both the city and the development community. So just a quick overview, DPFG, you like acronyms. We're going to talk a lot of acronyms today. That's what this business is all about. But DPFG is a national consulting firm headquartered in, not in Texas, I won't say where, just because I've been told that state, I'm not allowed to mention that word. But we've been in business for about 35 years. We have, we represent the developer side of the equation. We primarily focus on identifying financing solutions. 90% of our work involves infrastructure financing. We've been involved with over $17 billion of completed transactions in that time. Next slide.
I didn't actually catch anything.
Okay. Okay. So I'll vamp a little bit while we're -- so I'm the managing principal for our Texas region. Interestingly enough, our Texas region territory really stretches from Utah to the Atlantic Ocean. We are aggressive in Texas, so we take what we can get. So in Texas, we have been doing this, we've had an office in Texas for about 16, 17 years. I've been running the office for 15 years. I have over 40 years of real estate experience. I've been on your side of the table. I was CFO for Centex Homes in Arizona, CFO for K-Hove Homes in Houston, and worked for private developers and pension funds and the like. So I understand real estate. I come to the public finance side of it later in my career. Next. So in a simple, we're going to talk about the Texas Public Improvement District mechanism. We'll talk about other states, but most states have some form or fashion of this kind of district. Every state calls it something different. They all have their different acronym. It keeps us on our toes. But we're going to, Rachel had reached out to us because of what we have done in Texas, where 12 years ago, there was nothing being done with PIDs. We helped modify the statute to make it more workable, and now there's been over $2.6 billion of completed financings in Texas on PIDs with no defaults. Pretty good track record. So we appreciate the opportunity to be here. A PID is a very simple mechanism. I may, it may sound complicated, but that's because we're consultants and we have to make sure people hire us. If we make it sound too simple, they don't need us. The PID is a way to bring private dollars to pay for public infrastructure. We can go through a long discussion, I'm happy to do so if needed, as to how we got to this point. I am old enough, I've been in real estate long enough, that I can remember back in my early days, you would ask a city to build, that you were building a project, the city would go out and fund the infrastructure themselves. I know we all laugh at that today, but that was the case. But it's just not possible, feasible to make it work. We have to find a way to make what is a very important investment done on a cost-effective basis. Traditional lenders don't always want to fund infrastructure. Equity partners charge too much money for their funding of infrastructure, so we try to do it in a way to bring down the cost of capital. So the key thing is that from a city perspective, it is no cost or financial or legal risk to the city. And for the residents or property owners in a jurisdiction, unless you are purchasing property within the boundaries of a PID, you are not impacted at all, other than the benefits from that project being built, generating tax value, taxable revenues for the city and county and the like. The developer and the PID are paying for all the costs to get this done. Most of those costs are reimbursable through the process. So for, most of our work involves the use of PID bonds, city-issued revenue bonds, revenue bonds being the key factor, not a guarantee by the city in any way. Smaller projects that can't support the cost of doing a bond issue can still create a revenue mechanism on an annual basis that can be either cashed in every year or monetized on a private transaction. So it's not size-specific, but it is quality of project-specific. Next. So I'm not going to read through the list, but this is from the Texas statute. We're paying for basic infrastructure. Very exciting stuff, I know, roads, utilities and the like. The key thing from how we do it in Texas is everything we finance has to be a public improvement. So if we are doing a residential community and we're building an amenity center and it's only available to the residents, then that's not a public improvement. But if we're building trails that are open to anybody walking in the community, that is public. So we have to go through that sort of allocation of ownership, but it's pretty straightforward. So so from, I start with why would a city or a county, we can do it either way in Texas, want to do this? Because these are partnerships, and you have to get the city and county on board because unless, depending on what jurisdiction you're in, there's no other way to get these things done. So the mantra that we've heard for years and the mantra that I think most communities try to live by is, we want new development to effectively not be a burden on existing residents or existing city services. We want it to, it's open for debate, how you argue whether something pays for itself, but that's the goal. I will tell you that the ability to get funding through these mechanisms, very often upfront as construction bonds, allows you to move a project forward quicker, which generates benefits to the city, obviously becomes beneficial to the developer. We've already talked that the bonds that we ask to be issued are revenue bonds. They're nonrecourse, they're not guaranteed in any way by the city. It doesn't impact credit rating, it doesn't impact credit capacity. A lot of people don't always understand that, but that is the case. If you talk to the rating agencies, they'll tell you, we look at special assessment districts effectively as off-balance sheet financing. There's been about $50 billion of this type of debt issued around the country in the last 30 or 40 years. So we always like to say that, you know, a developer, the key thing here I would point out is, the mechanism allows, because it's discretionary, the city doesn't have to do this. But if the city wants to do it, they usually want to ensure a better quality project. So the ability to negotiate a development agreement, development standards that are more beneficial for everyone involved is a key feature. The city's in charge of doing the bonds, they are the ones who decide whether to do it, but once again, not taking any risk. And we're not, unless we're asking for a TIF, which we do on a number of our projects in Texas for different reasons, the city is keeping all of its property and sales tax revenues. And once again, we talked, no impact. So we like to say that you can get a much better project when you're using one of these special districts. Next. From a property owner's standpoint, what's really nice is, I don't have a total picture of the taxing structure in Tennessee, but in Texas, property taxes are very high. We don't have a state income tax, so we charge a lot of property taxes. Typically, property taxes are annually like 2.5% of the assessed value, or maybe 3%. And that can be a big number. And as we in Austin, I live in Austin, a couple of years ago, they reassessed, the annual reassessment, they raised values on average 55% in Austin in one year. So obviously, they didn't lower tax rates 55% at the same time, so people were being hit with much bigger tax bills. The PID is an assessment, it's not a tax. So it's a fixed number. We can go through that in more detail, but once the assessment's in place, it doesn't change, and that number is paid off typically over a 30-year period, and it is a flat payment, level payment, so that we don't have to worry about increasing property tax payments. It's on a tax bill, it's paid like a property tax, but it doesn't change with the value. So if you own a shopping center and it goes up 20% in value, you don't pay 20% more on your PID. You, in essence, your effective tax rate goes down because you have more value. So cost certainty is a big thing for users in Texas to be able to say, we know what our, because, you know, the PID may be 25, 20% of their overall tax bill, and the ability to know that that number's not going to change is critical. Also, there's a fixed term, typically 30 years, you can go a little longer, some cities want to go shorter. We have other mechanisms in Texas that are tax-based mechanisms. They have, that particular mechanism called municipal utility districts has been around a long time, so good mechanism. It never ends. They have, I always describe MUDs as going to outlast the nuclear holocaust-like cockroaches because it's just, for a lot of good reasons, they just never go away. We typically, ours go away, and once it's gone, it can't come back. Property owners can prepay their assessment. Every property owner, every lot, every parcel, has its own individual assessment, and you can prepay that at any time without penalty. And once it's been paid off, it can't come back. If we all lived in a PID community and I did not make my payment, I'm subject to foreclosure, just like property taxes, same process. But because I defaulted on my payment, they will not raise your payments because of that. Everyone has stands alone. In a MUD, and I use this as a comparable, in a tax district, if too many property owners go, don't pay, they will raise the burden on everybody else. And we don't think that's fair, quite frankly. And in general, we're getting a better project with enhanced communities. I always tell a story, about 50, historically, about 80 to 90% of the work involving special districts has been residential in nature. We actually, in our group, about 50/50 now between residential and commercial. We're seeing a bigger increase in using it for commercial projects because it's more expensive, interest rates are higher, cities are demanding more. But I always like to tell the story, sorry, Rachel, you heard this yesterday, and Beverly, You always know that you go into a new master plan community and they put up the beautiful sign that says, "Coming in Phase 3, the beautiful amenity center," and they have this nice drawing, and the sign gets knocked down two or three times a year by storms, gets pretty weathered, and you still don't have that amenity center. Very often in our world, the cities are requiring that amenity center be built in Phase 1 in order to get the PID. And because the PID financing provides funding early in the process, it frees up developer capital. Everybody wins in that situation. So from a developer's standpoint, because the assessment is a lien on the property, investors are happy to buy bonds that are issued in advance of construction. About 65% of our bond deals in Texas are what we call construction bonds. It's like a construction loan. Bonds are sold, money is deposited with a trustee bank selected by the city, the developer submits draws every month. Huge, you know, after 2009, and I was in Arizona in 2009 when, you know, the market did this, you couldn't get banks to finance things upfront. It just wasn't possible. There was a gap of financing, and the PIDs really solved that issue in Texas. It does cover a really broad range of costs. It is long-term financing. Right now, I would say PID bonds are selling between 5.5% and 6% on average in Texas. If you do a bond, if you build the improvements first out of your own pocket and then do a bond issue, what we call reimbursement bond, you probably get a half a point saving on the interest rate. I was always taught in grad school or undergraduate that you want to finance something with the term of the life of the asset. So to build a road that's going to last 30 or 40 years or more, hopefully, why would you take out a 2-year bank loan? You want to match up that term, so the PID bonds of 30 years allows you to do that. If the city was doing, when the city issues its debt to do its own infrastructure, they're not issuing 5-year bonds, they're issuing 30-year bonds.
Tax exempt?
Tax exempt bonds, yes, absolutely. They're nonrecourse to the developer. The bondholders are doing it based on the lien on the property, looking at the appraised value compared to the lien amount, typically at least two times. The appraised value has to double the value of the bond issue, and the appraisal is based on the land value as improved, not assuming vertical development. We don't make assumptions that something is going to happen. If it does, great, but if not, we want it conservatively underwritten. Texas, a lot of, in the MUD world, you have to go through a very expensive and extensive public bidding process because a MUD is a separate governmental entity. In the PID world, we are exempt from that provision so that generally, we negotiate with the city for the process, but we don't have to follow the full state law. And the developer gets to pick their contractor. And Austin, like Nashville area booms, is booming in many ways still, especially during some of the peak periods, it's hard to get a contractor. And you, as a developer, want to pick the contractor you like working with. You can do that. In a public bidding situation, in Texas, you could be stuck with someone that you have no confidence in. So I think that's a critical factor. Thank you. Next. So we're not going to talk about, it's over 300 bonds, more than $2.6 billion, like I said, tax exempt. We've done about, almost a billion of that on behalf of our clients. One developer who we worked with in the beginning, helped them get started, and then they decided they could do things themselves, has done about $750 million themselves. They're the biggest land developer in Texas. They don't, they just spit them out like crazy. They're done throughout the state. We don't do as much in Houston because Houston is where they invented MUDs, and the MUD lawyers have a very parochial view, and they don't think anything is as good as a MUD. And they convince their clients that way. But now the cities in Houston area are saying, we do not like the fact that we don't control the MUDs. We want control of what happens in our jurisdiction. So they're more turning to the PIDs. It is a partnership, and it works out. Thank you. In Texas, we call them public improvement districts, Alabama improvement districts, Georgia Community Improvement District. Interesting, in Georgia, you can only use that mechanism for commercial property, you can't do it on residential. So we actually worked, we did a $55 million bond for a mixed-use development that was actually took down a site of an old GM assembly plant outside of Atlanta in Dorville. And the key was to provide access from the site across the highway to a MARTIS station. And they didn't feel they could lease the property without that connection. We did a $55 million bond that built that connection, and the project's pretty successful. North Carolina Special Assessment District, I don't like that term because it's sad, but South Carolina Municipal Improvement District. Arizona calls it Community Facility District. We talk about acronyms. We can outdo anybody on acronyms in our world, trust me. So what we're talking about doing for Tennessee is not new to the investor world, it's not new to the marketplace. So it's just a matter of, and the thing I would point out is that the people who buy these bonds are not you and me. They're being sold to institutional investors, big mutual funds, Fidelity, Vanguard, Nuveen, they're the biggest buyer of these bonds. They're buying them for their tax-exempt municipal mutual funds, and they've been doing these kind of bonds for 40 years, they know what they're doing, they don't show up at council meetings. I think that's important. We don't want to sell to the people that live here, we don't want them showing up at the council meeting and saying, what's going on in the project? They're sold usually in increments of $100,000, so they're geared toward institutional sophisticated investors. Next. So in getting started with Rachel and her group last summer, we went and did some research. At the time, the only thing that was on the books in Tennessee was the Tennessee Special Assessment District, and it hasn't been used a lot. And I didn't understand conceptually until I read the act, why they weren't being used very much. So in Texas, we start with putting an assessment on land as it's about to be developed. In Tennessee, you can't do that. That's part of the law. There's a maximum term of 30 years. We typically can go up to 45-year term of the district, 30 years on each bond. There was a limit of 75% of the cost. We're market-driven. There's also, you can only assess 50% of the cash value of the lot in the finished value. Once again, we're market-driven. We would probably never do 50% because that'd be if you're, if you're a $500,000 home, you're going to have a $250,000 assessment. I don't think that works. There was a minimum assessment of 67% of cost, but the assessments have to be paid, and if you pay on a 67% assessment, that could make it unmarketable of a property. Then you can't, it doesn't work. We use actual bids to finalize the assessments. You're required to do public bidding, we do not. I found this interesting, in intersection improvements that are being financed, a third had to be paid for by the city. Well, maybe the city doesn't have the money. Maybe there's enough capacity in the private developers' project to pay for 100% of that intersection. If it's being built to benefit the project, it's eligible to be funded that way. Why should we put a burden on the city? A prepayment penalty. We have no prepayment penalties, critical. So if I buy a house and I'm buying cash in my house, I don't want a mortgage, why should I have an assessment payment? I want to pay it off. I'm a private developer, I'm bringing in Nordstrom's to be my anchor tenant, Nordstrom is a big gorilla, says, I don't pay assessments. The developer uses the assessment to finance the improvements, but then they effectively pay it off through the land sale to Nordstrom, whomever. Why should you have to pay a penalty for that? I found this very interesting that although there was a state-level, and correct me if I'm wrong, as long as there was a state-level statute, every jurisdiction in Tennessee that I could see had their own rules of how to utilize these. We have one state law in Texas. Individual cities can have their own policies, but you have some uniformity across the market that a developer coming from one city to another knows the basic rules of the game. And we felt that was pretty important. Since we started this last year, next slide, Tennessee has created the Infrastructure Development District. I think the official act was Residential Housing Improvement District. Once again, new acronyms. I haven't heard that one before. I looked, took a look at that, and it's like, okay, this is better than what you had, but it's still, it's limited to residential or projects with majority residential. Like I said, we are now do, half of our work is on commercial mixed-use type projects because it's still valuable. Any project can benefit from these mechanisms. Why would you unnecessarily limit your property types? You had a minimum cost, you could only do projects that had $5 million at cost. Once again, you may have a small project that's very important to a town that needs to be done, why should you unnecessarily limit yourself? It was very limited and nondescriptive about the assessment methodology. We think you need more discussion about different alternatives, but also more descriptions of how that is to be done to make sure that it's fair to everybody. In Texas, we can't, we can't decide we're going to put, I'm going to pick on Rachel. I did this yesterday, sorry. We can't do an assessment that puts 99% of the burden on Rachel because we don't like Rachel. We actually like Rachel a lot, but you can't overly burden one person at the expense of somebody else. It's got to be fair and equitable. Now, that's open for debate, but the Attorney General of Texas reviews all this information, so they're the final opinion. One of the factors that make these mechanisms really successful is that you disclose them to your users, tenants, property buyers, homeowners. There's nothing in this act that talks about what disclosure needs to be made. And I can tell you from the beginning, when Texas did not do good disclosure, Texas historically has had the worst disclosure. You basically had to tell somebody at closing they were in a public improvement district, and you didn't have to tell them what they owed, you just gave them one piece of paper and a stack. and a stack of closing documents, and we know everybody reads every piece of paper at a closing. And surprisingly, people missed that there was a PID. And they would get a bill, and they would freak out, and I would have to go talk to that group. I don't like talking to a group of angry property owners. It's not healthy. And my clients were very happy to sit in the other room and let me stand up in front of them, I don't like doing that. Disclosure can be very positive. We can show that by effectively off-balance sheet financing a bunch of the costs, that the development costs, the lot costs, the parcel costs are less. And therefore, if those are less, and that parcel could be sold at a more competitive market price, and you might be able to sell a home or have a rental rate that is more competitive. And more importantly, if you didn't have the mechanism, those development costs could push your rental rates or home prices beyond what is viable. So we're trying to make things more feasible, more than anything else. So we think disclosure and showing that example of how much money somebody saves is important. There's nothing in the act about annual updates of what's going on in the district, we think that's important. In one state I won't mention by name, if you don't properly disclose what's going on to property owners, you don't get your bond funds. They're very strict. It's important, the marketplace will determine whether something is a marketable transaction. But at the right price, anyone can sell any bond, quite frankly. Some jurisdictions, North Carolina for instance, puts in a statutory requirement, you cannot sell a bond if the ratio of the appraisal to the bond amount is less than two to one. There's nothing in this act that talks about that kind of requirement. The market is typically two to one, we're fine with that. We don't want to put anyone in a position where, we have a project we're working on in Texas in a small town where the developer is the mayor. I don't want, that won't happen because it's a pretty proven market in Texas, but I wouldn't want somebody to say, I want a one-to-one deal because I'm in charge. We want to avoid that situation because what happens isn't, it could be a really good deal, and it may make sense, but it increases the risk. And if we have a project go bad, it looks bad for everybody. So we're very proud of the fact we have no defaults in 2.6 billion dollars in Texas. And there's no discussion of maximum term. We want these things to be put in place, used, and go away. So what I'm hoping is that through this process, we can bring a lot of the ideas of Texas and other states that use these very successfully, and either amend or replace the existing statute to make it more usable. It doesn't do us any good to have these acts on the books if they're not being used. So we have just a couple examples of how projects get done. This was our first project in Texas. This is a 2,000-acre master plan community, very sustainable with geothermal energy supplying utilities, it's really creative. It sat around for eight years and couldn't get done because it had a massive infrastructure requirement. In 2011, we worked with the City of Austin, did $40 million of bonds. That was the first major PID bond in Texas. And now we're up to 2.6 billion. So we have, next slide. It is a huge development, it continues to go on, lots of different uses, 700-acre park, city loves that. It has opened up development on that entire east side of Austin, which historically has not been developed. So we've done, we did 34 million upfront back in 2011, we've done two new individual phase bonds, and we've got a third underway right now. And so you can see that back in 2011, when people were not as comfortable, 8 and 3/4% interest rate primarily because they were still three years away from development. When we get into the actual development, we're at 4.8, 5.5. We had projects during COVID that interest rates 3 and 1/4. Unfortunately, that's not the case anymore, I wish it was. Soames Landing is a mixed-use project in New Braunfels suburb, I don't want to say suburb, halfway between San Antonio and Austin. They don't like to be considered a suburb of anything. When I first approached the city about a project, a residential project, they basically were kind enough to open up the door when they threw me out. Because they didn't want any more residential development. But when we came to them with this commercial mixed-use development, they were very welcoming. So it's about halfway constructed now. We've, they've completed phase one, we did our phase one bond, they're working on phase two, we'll see how they do to get there. It's a beautiful project. Next. So we did $8.8 million bonds, 4 and 3/4. We're projecting 7.7, hopefully they'll get there real soon. Okay. And then in Mooresville, North Carolina, we did a mixed-use project called Langtry on Lake Norman. There's only been a few deals done in North Carolina, we've done them all. And it's been this one and one in Hillsborough, another mixed-use project. So they've been geared toward using them on mixed-use projects. Some of the things they do in North Carolina are a little odd. A city doesn't get to issue bonds in North Carolina, they're all issued by, through a state agency. The state, you have to go through the state agency to do these kind of bonds, and quite frankly, the agency doesn't really want to bother with them because they consider it a burden on them to actually help do a project. It's, they have a great law, it just doesn't get used a lot. So obviously, an incredible amount of different uses, aquatic facility that's really amazing, go on. We did $12 million in bonds, $12 million improvements, we did $8.5 million of bonds. And you can see what interest rates were back then. We did, whatever reason Tennessee, I mean, North Carolina, a couple of the bonds we've done have been relatively short-term. We would prefer that they be longer, but once again, the state agency put parameters. So, but still very effective financing. And then Shenandoah, Texas is basically across the highway from the Woodlands, literally across the interstate. So they can't say they're in the Woodlands, but they are in the Woodlands. Mixed-use development, one of our first mixed-use projects that we did bonds for in Texas. And I do a lot of business in the area, so I always stay in hotels onsite and go to their restaurants, I feel like I'm helping out their business. We, there were $15 million of improvements, we put a $15 million bond, different terms, project's up and running, doing quite well. So these mechanisms are used on multiple project types. Very often when we're doing a lot of the mixed-use projects we're working on in Texas now, we're combining a PID with a TIF, or as we call it in Texas, because we got to be different, TERES, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. We have our own acronyms because Texas is unique. I didn't grow up in Texas, so. So with that, I know I went through a lot, but I'm here to answer any and all questions, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Rick, I really appreciate that. And so now we'll open it up for questions and have some more dialogue. I encourage, you know, my colleagues to speak up too, that have ideas and questions as well. Always promise at our meetings that we'll get out by the time that we say we will, we have about 45 minutes, and then we'll be approaching the top of the hour, nine o'clock. So bear with me, I'll run the microphone around, and again, it's for the video taping, and so people that view it can hear what the questions are and the responses. So Greg, did you say you're first?
Thank you so much for coming. First, I just want to say that I appreciate your haircut.
I got a cut on Saturday, just.
Yes. Yeah. He does look a lot better. He wears it well. So in a PID district, if you have, for example, 500 acres, and in that 500 acres you have 10 different farmers, you have the bond sale, the developer starts pulling the bonds, but the developer is only developing 100 acres out of the 500 acres. Are those other farmers who own the 400 acres, are they responsible for payment? And when are they then responsible for payment?
So, great question. We're talking about phasing. Projects of a significant nature, like Whisper Valley, phasing bonds throughout the life of the project. We only put a burden on the project, the part of the property being developed at that time. We have clients who say, we're buying our land in three tranches from the farmer, they refuse to be assessed for their property until, while they own it. So we phase the assessments appropriately. So if you're doing 10 farms, 10 parcels, we could have 10 bonds during the life of the project. There's no benefit to putting a burden on a landowner who doesn't, who's not willing to take on that burden. Quite frankly, politically, it'll never happen. Because if we went in front of a council or a board, that person would stand up and say, I'm being screwed over, excuse my language, and they would vote against it.
Thank you, Greg. We're going to work there now and get to Alan, but Eric, go ahead.
I wanted to follow up on Greg's. So say there is an improvement associated with that 500 acres that benefits the whole, but you've only got the one on board right now. So say it's a, it's a part of the road network, or a sewer infrastructure that has broader application, how does that work when you have a bigger upfront cost that then benefits these other folks that may come in later? How do you make that fair over time?
So we can only, we can only assess the first property owner for the benefit they receive. So they get 10% of the benefit of that spine road. We know that we spent the cost for that spine road. When we do the second phase, we can out, we can reimburse the developer for the cost, even though they spent it a couple of years earlier, they can get the reimbursement when they do the next phase. So every time we do a phase, we allocate. Absolutely. We allocate, well, those are called major improvements, another term, MIA. And so, bad acronym. We can recover those costs. The timing of when dollars are spent and the timing of when you recover them doesn't always match up. And that's a perfect example, where you've got upfront costs that you have to do the minimum upfront to have anything done, and you're going to get that money over time, not upfront. That's just that, in that situation. But you definitely phase the assessments. Now, in some cases, we will put an assessment on the entirety of the property for that specific spine road. And now the developer's incurring the cost to pay for that until they can develop and sell off other phases. But sometimes they need the cash. So we can, we can have a small assessment on the balance of the property and a full assessment on the first phase. That's the art of this, quite frankly.
To build on that, because we do have one of those scenarios in Franklin. So using this example, there's no timing on when the other property owners, farmers as Greg said, would be developing their property. So it could be 10 years, it could be 50 years.
Hopefully not, but yes.
Hopefully not, but that's a reality. If that initial developer leverages the financing and puts that infrastructure in with the intent that they're going to hopefully get reimbursed.
Yes. That is correct, that is correct.
Alan.
Rick, a little different scenario here. So let's say you got the 500-acre PID district, and you set that up, and they're paying for all that infrastructure within that PID district, the sewer, the water, amenities, whatever that might be, that's open to the general public. But that PID district also triggers additional infrastructure that has to be done outside that PID district. So does that PID district, can it be set up to also pay for, I guess we can consider off-site improvements in order to support that PID district?
Yes. The short answer is yes. What we, we can pay for onsite or off-site improvements as long as they benefit the property. Doesn't have to be physically within the boundaries of the district. So if I have to bring a water line to the site, like Whisper Valley had to bring a five-mile water line, not the cheapest thing in the world. It wasn't, it was only partially in the boundaries of the district, but we could pay for it. The key is if we have, if that off-site improvement is oversized to support other developers, our PID can only pay for the part that benefits our property. So what we often do is negotiate some type of reimbursement. We'll fund the oversizing, but in Whisper Valley, there was oversizing, the city agreed to, in stages, reimburse the developer, and then the city will get funded by new developers connecting in. Is that?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, I'll get to you, Scott.
Thank you. I'm David McGowan. 12 years ago, we went to the state of Tennessee and tried to be able to do mud districts and stuff. We got shot down by really the city planners, who did not like the idea that we were doing this. This past year, 30 developers across middle Tennessee raised over $300,000. And we hired the firm of Bass, Berry &amp; Sim to create the RITA Act. And that is the Residential Infrastructure Development Act. It has passed, Governor Lee has signed it, and it's gone into effect. We anticipate this bill will change. I personally was able to develop mud districts in Texas years ago, working for a public corporation. And what you'll find about these acts, they will change and modify over the years. When we were doing mud districts, we were not allowed to do public park improvements and things of that nature. That has all changed over the last couple of years.
Couldn't do roads either in the beginning.
Exactly. And so we anticipate the RITA Act will change. It does allow for neighborhood mixed-use, commercial to be able to be reimbursed in taxes as well. And so just share that information with you briefly, and just tell you that, you know, we have made inroads. However, you have to have administration that will support it. And one of the main things I say, if you really want to go this route, what it needs to happen is the developer organizations in the middle Tennessee area needs to figure out, okay, how are we going to pay for this? Because our original RITA Act, basically, we spent $150,000 on that one act to get that. Build Tennessee, which is our organization, is a nonprofit, it's in existence right now, and we're trying to tackle everything from stormwater requirements and everything to do with development overall, but wanted to share that with you briefly. And so there is a mechanism in place. We do anticipate it will probably be modified and changed over the years.
I was pleased with what the RITA Act did compared to what was there before. I think it's set up to be modified, amended, enhanced, to be used for a lot of different kind of projects. One thing I wanted to point out, it was a point in discussion we had yesterday. In Texas, I'm actually president of a mud board in Texas, because everyone in the real estate business in Texas is on a mud board because it's an elected office, and they run out of people to be on the boards. You get 200 bucks for every meeting, it was like, really a lot of fun. Muds in Texas have eminent domain powers, and I think that freaks out a lot of cities and counties because they don't control that. PIDs do not. The eminent domain powers reside with the city and the county. We don't need it, because the city and county create the PID and effectively are the governing board of that process.
Wait, I'm going to get to Scott, if that's okay.
No, I'm sorry.
I just, I want to build upon what David said. In Texas, muds are set up by the state legislation, right?
No, well.
Or the utilities.
The muds are created either through the state agency, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCQ, or you go to the legislature and have them formed at, through the legislative session. In the years past, you needed to do that mostly because if you wanted the ability to finance roads and parks, you needed, that wasn't in the basic powers. It's been expanded. But you, that 150,000, you all paid for that legislation? People in Texas pay that for individual muds being approved at the state level. It's expensive.
PIDs are created by cities or counties.
It's the only people that can create them.
But muds are state?
State level, yes.
Yeah, and I want to say that too, because hopefully, we leave here today, as we have done over the years when we've had these meetings, that together, we're going to try to move tools like public improvement districts forward. I want to be candid, though, what I heard David say is that when you came in with a mud, it wasn't the city that was withholding it, it was the state legislation that caused, you know, it actually caused us to get to this point today. And I talked with Rick before our meeting started, that what we have with the Residential Development and Infrastructure Act is a start. You know, when we leave here, we've got to focus on, and Cal's here from the chamber, we've got to think about how to evolve that. So Scott, and I'll get to you, thank you.
Thanks, Vernon. Rick, thanks so much.
Thanks, Vernon. Rick, thanks so much for your time today, and thanks for this presentation. This is great. My first question really goes to the staff, that this was, is being presented as an alternative to the impact fees, that, that we've got impact fees that we're facing, and this is an alternative to that. My question, when you look at these, A, number one, I'm not sure I understand exactly why we're going down the road of Pids if we're looking at the overall infrastructure for the city. And not to pick on the guy on the front row, but I think of Ben, and I think about maintenance. When we have old maintenance projects that need to be done, how do you fund those when you've gone down the road of Pids?
Okay. I mean, Pids are geared toward project-specific infrastructure. We're not, I don't think we're trying to solve citywide infrastructure issues. That's still, in my mind, a responsibility of the city. But by taking that burden off of the city for project-specific, it frees up its capital capacity for citywide requirements. Pids can also be set up, especially within a project, to provide the maintenance obligations. We have one county we work with in, outside San Antonio, said, "We'll do Pids, but we're not gonna maintain the roads. We just don't have the money to do it." I don't know what they're doing with the tax revenue that our clients are effectively paying. But, so, we're set up, in these cases, they're residential projects. The HOA is responsible for the road maintenance. And if the HOA ever falls down on the job, the county has the ability to levy another assessment for the road maintenance. So, you can do maintenance obligations through a Pid as well. Did that answer your question?
I want to address it from, you said the city is, what is the city doing? The city is learning and trying to investigate this. And I would not necessarily say it's absolutely an or. It might be an and. It might be a mix, because not every project is gonna be a fit for a district. So, there's the baseline of what impact fees provide us. So, I wouldn't say we're necessarily abandoning, or this is a full, it may be an alternative in situations, or it may be something you assign for certain types of infrastructure, types of projects. So, we're trying to learn. So, I would be careful to say it's all an or. It may be an and. We're trying to get our heads around it. The Act is literally a few weeks old in a lot of ways. So, we're trying to learn what that Act is and learn what's out there. So, I want to be clear that we're in the information-collecting, understanding mode. Board's working, yeah, discovery. So, I just want to be clear on that.
We have impact fees in Texas. Very often, because...
That's a question for you, too, mixing impact fees.
Yeah. So, very often, when we have a city where that has impact fees, and we're putting in the infrastructure using the Pid dollars, we get a credit on those impact fees, because we're, no reason to double pay for it.
Just like we do offsets now. We do offset agreements now in certain infrastructures put in place. There could be a world where this is part of that formula.
And as a citizen, I just want to...
As just one citizen of 90,000 in the city, I just want to say, in support of our alderman and mayor, that if they need to vote for a property tax increase to cover costs versus going through complicated districts like this, I think it's something that needs to be considered.
And, you know, that's why, that's why you're, I'm gonna get to Bev. Let me come. You know, if we set ourselves up and work together in a collaborative manner, as Rick has pointed out, the improvement districts generate the revenue and the infrastructure to help guide the growth of the city. And I would be one to say, you know, that's what we're here for. We do that. And, yeah, do we have to figure it out? We got a lot of talented folks in just this room here, and the ones that couldn't make it.
Very often, we're doing what's called a fiscal impact analysis, to identify that a project generates more revenue than the cost to service that project, and therefore is incrementally beneficial to the jurisdiction.
Does that happen in every project?
No, no. But in the state I'm not allowed to talk about, it happens on every project. It is going to happen on every project in Texas, I think, over time. We, a lot of times, we're doing it because when we're asking for a TIF in addition to a Pid, they're giving up tax revenue, so they want to see that they're coming out ahead. But we, yeah, all good.
I'm trying to stand up here. I miss stuff. Well, there was something, you know, if it was so complic, Scott, you mentioned the word complicated, but I'm not so sure it's that complicated. If it was that complicated, why would all these states be doing this? Why would they even delve into any of this if it's so bogged down?
It's not complicated. It requires education. You know, the first time we went to a jurisdiction in Texas, they looked at us like, "What are you talking about?" It is, we're getting to the point where it's much more streamlined. There are city, there's one city in Texas that has done about 45 of these bonds themselves. They're a machine. They have a policy. This is how it's done. No negotiation. When we get bonds done in that city, we don't even have to talk to city staff. Their consultants drive the process. Everybody knows what needs to get done. It's really smooth. When you get that first or second deal with a new city, it gets not complicated. It just takes time to get everyone comfortable.
Well, it's growing pains, I would think. Yeah, exactly. And then, the other thing is, David, were you, were you mentioning, was it Go Build Tennessee that you were referring to?
Go Build Tennessee is a whole different organization. It'll dissolve next year. It's actually called Build Tennessee.
Oh, that's different.
It's a Build Tennessee. It's a whole different organization, whole different nonprofit that we set up. And again, it's made up mainly of developers. One point I like to make, while I've got this microphone, is development cost has increased three times over the last years. And so, the bottom line is, you know, to bring in nice developments, whether it's Berry Farms, or West Haven, things of that nature, how do you pay for those type developments right there? And this is a mechanism to pay for those developments. So, what we're getting money back for is all the water and the sewer lines we put in the sit, in the ground, that we normally give back to a utility district, or we give back to a city. And so, it helps reduce the cost of that development, which, again, makes housing more affordable.
Right. And it comes back to the cost of capital. I lived in Houston for 12 years, and muds are king in the Houston area. And before 2007, when things started going down, you could go to a bank in Houston, say, "I've got," find a piece of land, identify three builders that are gonna buy lots from you, get a note from the seller on the land, so you didn't have to put up any cash. But you got earnest money from the builders. Go to your bank, with the earnest money as your equity to the bank. The bank would give you 100% cost non-recourse loan. I know those are unusual phrases in today's world. And then you would, as you sold lots to the builders, they would pay off the loan. You created your mud, and then in three or four years, because everything in a mud is back-ended, not upfront, the profit to the developer was the mud bond. And that was a great business model. But when banks stopped lending 100% non-recourse, you had a gap, or you couldn't afford the guarantee. You had to find other ways to do it. Because the alternative is, once again, if we are financing infrastructure at between a 5% bond issue, or a 15% private lender, or 25% equity partner, huge difference on the economics of the projects. And that's what, for many years, made Houston more affordable. I mean, besides other factors, that was a big part of it. I was on a panel with a developer in Austin who uses muds, not Pids. And they said, "The lot that we sell to a builder for $70,000, if we didn't have the mud, we'd have to sell that lot for $130,000." Think about what the home price becomes if you add $60,000 more cost. It's $300,000 more in the home price. And all of a sudden, that project's not feasible. That's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah. I think one of the whole things I'm trying to get at, too, I've got two more real quick, is bringing down funding, providing the funding, getting the funding for these developers upfront that's sustainable for them, and also bringing some costs down in the homes. And so, if that can be a win-win situation, I'm all for that, to see how we can do it. But the developer, you know, we've got one developer right now. He's ready to break ground, and he's already signed all these leases. And yet, we've hit him with all these huge fees now, that we've raised the fees, and we've got to pay for it. We understand that. But they can't go back to these renters and say, "Hey, well, you know, instead of paying $2,800, now you're gonna be paying $4,800." They're gonna lose them all. So, the second, I have two more quick points. I have a question for you, and then I want you to talk about Pids and TIFs. You can do them together, I think, as you mentioned. Could you speak to that? But before you speak to that, I think there is a cure period. Would have to be done by the state, though. Just like there's a cure period if you fell behind on your assessment. Like, if you fell behind the assessment of a property, property tax, you would have a cure period, so you don't get to throw it out, correct?
Right. Yeah. The Pid payment is treated, for all effective purposes, like a property tax payment. It's on the property tax bill. If you don't pay your Pid payment, you're subject to foreclosure. If you're subject to foreclosure, somebody can come to the courthouse and just pay off what is owed. There's no acceleration of the entire assessment. In essence, what, we had one situation where a developer couldn't make the payment. His bank came in and made the payments, because otherwise, they were gonna get wiped out. So, it's the same process. We do projects where we combine a Pid with a TIF, primarily a more mixed-use commercial that is sales tax-oriented, or job creation more desirable, not as demanding in terms of city services. What we do in those cases is we take the annual TIF payment and apply it to the Pid payment due, so the effective pass-through to the user is hopefully minimized to zero, and therefore ensuring even a more marketable project. So...
I'm gonna, go ahead, Rachel.
One thing, maybe clarify, but I think one, oh, yeah. One important thing to remember is that, you know, we're not bound by how it's done in any other state. We can imagine how it could work in Tennessee, however we think best. And one thing, I'd love for you to touch on really quickly, because it might answer some other questions, because I think it took us a while to get to this answer from you once upon a time, is when you are solving, potentially solving for impact fees, how, you know, you could imagine a Tennessee legislation where you actually fold impact fees into your cost of the project, and similar to everything else, you're paying it over time. So, you actually are not doing away with impact fees. You're not separating impact fees. You're folding it in to this overall, you know, new funding mechanism or funding scheme.
Yeah. So, in Texas, unfortunately, the statute doesn't provide impact fees as ineligible costs. We would, we keep trying. We haven't gotten there yet. In our unnamed state, these mechanisms are basically used 100% to just pay impact fees, because in that state, you can have an impact fee of $100,000 on a new house. So, in that jurisdiction, they're using these to pay for fees and to help pay for schools and things like that. They're not generally paying for infrastructure, because their economics are so whacked out. Just leave it at that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mayor Moore and then Alderman Baggett speak. And I think that, that question that Rachel and Rich brought up gets to what Eric said. Not every development we're gonna have in the city likely is gonna end up in a Pid. So, then...
Yeah. It is discretionary.
Discretionary.
We want, that's a concern a lot of times when we go to a new city. Well, how do I, how do I decide or tell somebody their project doesn't get a Pid? You just tell them, "It's not what the city wants," or "It's not, the policies list key target objectives." We have one city that said, "We'll do Pids. We just don't want to do them for residential." It's like, okay, they want them to be used for commercial and industrial, because they're the, they're the new home of, Samsung is building the first of 10, $17 billion chip plants in this small town outside of Austin. And they don't want big residential development. They want commercial development to support Samsung. I happened to work on the Samsung deal, so it was pretty cool. So...
My question has to do with housing and its relationship to what you've been talking about. One of our biggest challenges is workforce housing. 70% of our workers drive into Franklin every single day. So, have you seen a linkage between these Pids and so on that you've been talking about to requiring any type or encouraging workforce housing?
Yes. We have, we have a wide range of jurisdictions we deal with. Some of them say, "We only want to use them for projects that are gonna derive what, however you define affordable housing." And we can show them the numbers that if we can knock $20,000 or $30,000 off the cost of a price of a lot, that even with the annual payment on a Pid, someone comes out ahead, and therefore drives down the affordability. They don't, if we, in one jurisdiction, if we came in and said they were gonna be, all the homes are $350,000, they'd say, "Great." If we said, "Well, they're gonna be, all the homes $700,000," they'd say, "Go away. We don't want, we have enough of that." Other jurisdictions say, "We don't want the 350. We only want the 700." I don't want to get in trouble by bringing this up, but we also have some jurisdictions in Texas that say, "We need to put more money into affordable housing. We want your projects to support it. You either build it on-site, include it within a Pid, or you give us a fee as from, basically, in exchange for getting the Pid, and we then will put the money into the affordable housing."
We personally do not have inclusionary something.
We used to.
Yeah. Well, but in Texas, it becomes, because the Pid is a discretionary financing mechanism, it's driven into the development. We're not using bond funds, but it could be 5% or 10% of the effective bond funds paid for by the developer as a fee.
It could be a component of the Pid.
Yes. Yeah.
Rick, just a quick question, as I get over to Alderman Baggett here. Before Rachel and the NIOP group contacted you, had you ever heard of Franklin, Tennessee before?
I actually did, primarily because about 20 years ago, I was interviewing for a potential job in Nashville to be CFO for a developer here. And my wife and I had started looking around, where do we want to live? We were very excited. And Franklin was on top of our list. Unfortunately, I didn't get the job.
Thank you.
I always wondered what would have happened, because I ended up moving to Arizona from Houston, which was great. But I would have, I think Arizona was a very traumatic market to be in, so...
I was gonna say, I think we, you took the words out of my mouth. We probably would have had Pids.
I'd be on that side.
Yeah. Two things. One, I think, and I think Vernon mentioned this, but this all is great. This all is fantastic. I think everyone, I mean, there's lots of great things, but there's clearly probably some reasons why. They had challenges getting various provisions put into the new RID law. So, there's a lot, like, this is wonderful. But I think there's also like another side that I think we need to understand better, too, at the state level, why they reversed to certain things, and how City of Franklin might could, in our own way, come alongside and us, understand those pitfalls, and maybe kind of help craft that state legislation that benefits, you know, what we're wanting to do. That's number one. I think you're, you mentioned we might have a second follow-up meeting, which is the, and this is leading to the question, but that, really, this integration between impact fees and that you brought up, and how they interact. I don't, we're not gonna get, do away with impact fees. But there's certain things, this is the question, are there certain things, when you do roll impact fees and you roll all these costs into it, that impact, like, other economic impacts, like the price of land? I would expect if now there's more capital freed up for the development community, then the landowners are able to sell it for more, because there's more capacity. So, I understand that this brings the costs of housing down, because the developers don't have this cost. But make no mistake, all the development we've had to date has included these costs in impact fees and various things. And unless you find me a developer that's going to build an apartment complex and rent under market voluntarily, I don't see that. So, I guess those are the kinds of questions, like impact fees, us impacting the market. Those are the two things I really want us to get our hands on, because this is a massive shift. And for those that own a lot of properties already in the, in the market, multifamily and so forth, and then now, you've got all this new generation of multifamily that comes in with significantly less costs, and they come in and undercut, then they can come in and, and offer prices underrated. So, these are the challenges I think everyone should be thinking about. Do you want a development coming in that can charge, you know, 30% less on their rents, because you had to pay it in the old way, and they can do it the next? Only, I think our next meeting, we need to address that.
I understand the point. I would argue it comes from a different angle. How many projects have not gotten done because they can't afford to build them, first of all? And second of all, the people who've already built their projects, they built at a lower-cost basis, probably lower interest rates, and they have a competitive advantage.
No, that's good. I want, that's a whole nother issue. But the second thing is, like, I felt like that was a presentation to the state. We can't change our laws. Like, what is your ask of us? I think is another reason. Like, yeah, we're all gonna be educated out of this. We're, okay, well, we're all gonna be educated when we leave here. But what is the ask of us? Because I think this would be great to be shown to the state, your... Because I think this would be great to be shown to the state, your state legislators, to give us the tools to do it. So what are you asking us to do here?
So I think that, you know, as, as someone who occasionally runs around the Capitol asking state legislators to do things, um.
How successful are you with that?
Mixed, mixed, uh, but, uh, where, where it can be helpful to present to you all first is, you know, also with what Dave McGowan said, it was primarily the cities that have opposed this in the past. So if I take a piece of legislation to a state representative or senator, and I say, "I really want you to do this, the cities hate it," they're like, "Yeah, I'm not touching that." If I take it to them and say, "We've been workshopping this with cities for two years, they're excited about this, can you please help us get this passed?" They're going to call Mayor Moore, they're going to call the mayors and say, "Do you like this?" And if it's something that everyone's on board with, it's going to quietly, you know, go through. I mean, you never know. But it's, it's much easier to get something through if you've gotten everybody, all the parties involved behind it, well before you even, you know, show them a piece of paper on it.
Um, I'm gonna, Mary, I'll get, get to you here secondly. Um, the question I, I asked Rick about if he ever heard of, of City of Franklin has an alternative meaning to it is because, as we all know, and we're all a part of it, that Franklin, Tennessee is a community of choice for families and for businesses. And as we think about Pids, we may not be like some of the communities that Rick mentioned that can't get the investment in their community, and they'll set up a Pid to help with that. And I shared an example yesterday with a, a group of, and, and Rick has said it, that we get to choose as a community, and that's where Board of Mayor and Alderman, Planning Commission, Historic Zoning Commission, and all of you come into play. I give four scenarios that, that come up in my mind, as I've talked to different consultants like Rick, that helps communities move Pids forward. Say we have a development that we want a mixed-use development, and we want a larger conference center or sports venue. And help to fund that. Maybe we have a 450-unit apartment building that would be eligible for a Pid. Maybe we want a development of attainable, affordable housing that wants to help shape the community. Or maybe we have an area, and we, we know this area out on the interstate, that we want to extend infrastructure in a strategic manner to help spur other development. So there are trade-offs to the types of developments, and those are just rough scenarios, of what, what is the vision for the community? Because we are not like every other community. Uh, Mary? Rick, did you want to respond to that statement?
I'll, I'll, let me just say, let me give you an example of how one city we deal with in Texas is using Pids in a creative way. A lot of development planned for a given city, there is a significant upgrade to the water infrastructure required. It is not something that can be borne by the developers, because it's broader capacity. The city doesn't want to use their credit capacity to pay for all the improvements. The city is going to create a Pid to pay for those improvements. As those improvements are, the LUEs are being acquired by the developers, they're, instead of paying a, a connection fee, they're paying off the Pid for that, for their section of the Pid, for those water improvements. So the city's not having to use their credit capacity to get it done, and yeah, the city might have some costs that they incur until all the area is developed, but it's still more cost-effective for them. And then it, that Pid assessment's not being passed on to those builders, they can, they're going to do a new Pid for their project, because in lieu of paying an impact fee, they will have just prepaid that assessment for the water, so.
Mary?
Thanks, Rick. Um, I think this kind of maybe follows up to what you were just saying. Does a property owner have to agree to be in the Pid?
Yes, very simply. So the, the law in Texas is that the petition for the creation of the Pid, and it's pretty standard across all of them, it has to be submitted by people who own 50, 51% or more of the property. Politically speaking, if I have a client who submits a Pid petition, and there's multiple property owners, and six of them, and four of them are for it and two are against, no city's going to approve it. No one's going to impose a Pid on somebody who doesn't want it. It's that simple.
Hey, Rick, thanks for being here. Uh, Gray Harrison, Kimmy Horn, and just adding to what Mary said, um, I guess, you know, the, the question would be, you know, if, if owners, I guess, you know, as developers, we want to cast as wide a net as possible to be able to account for as many properties, just because ideally, you know, the, the development could pay for those improvements, but in the real world, that's not the scenario. You know, you want to incorporate as many properties as you can. So, you know, in a lot of scenarios, not every property is going to equally benefit from those improvements. And so I guess, first question, how would you handle that sort of situation? And then, second question is, if someone decides they don't want to be in a Pid right now, can they be added to the Pid down the road?
I mean, being added to the Pid is, is a, how the legislation is created. We, in Texas, we can add to a Pid as long as they're not, it's more complicated. Very often, it's easier to just set up an additional Pid on an adjacent piece of land and share the cost in that way. We can only allocate costs to someone who benefits. So if we had multiple, we, we try to avoid multiple property owners within one Pid, because it's management challenge, who's in charge? So, but you can set up multiple Pids, but if you also have four property owners, four phases, each have their own requirements, you can set up one Pid, and they each have their own area that they're going to finance separately. So we, we, that's what we get paid to figure out those solutions, quite frankly.
Um, as I, I'm gonna go over to, to Adam, and then Alan, and then come back to Bev. Real quickly, we have this really cool place in, in Franklin called Cool Springs.
I stayed there last night.
Thirty years ago, well, thank you for that.
I made sure of it.
And it's ripe for redevelopment. Talk a little bit, if you can, quickly, I don't want to take away from these questions, but how has, in your experience, communities worked with existing infrastructure, a lot of surface parking lots that's ripe for redevelopment, and the infrastructure would need to be upgraded?
An allowable cost in our world is public parking garages. So if you need to put in, if you're re, re-renovating projects, and you need to put in structured parking to eliminate surface parking, to put in more leasable space and things like that, it can be done. We have to, it, on residential, it's a little more challenging. We have a law in Texas called Homestead, and so it's hard to put in an assessment on someone who already has claimed their homestead. It's not a, an enforceable lien. Tennessee may not have that issue, but, um, yes, we can, the mechanisms work, and you just have to figure out how it benefits. We're doing a, a, a big mixed-use project that will involve renovation of a, an arena as well. We're not paying for the renovation of the arena, but we're, we're helping pay for the public parking garages that are needed and get away from those massive surface parking lots, and putting more mixed-use, high-value, sales-tax-generating development.
Great, um, two questions or comments. Uh, the first one, a little easier maybe, um, I think you said earlier, just to confirm, um, it's kind of a two-part question. The, the Pid payment is tax-deductible for the resident? Did, I think Dave maybe asked that question?
The bonds are.
Similar to a tax payment?
The bonds are tax exempt, the bonds are tax exempt. In Texas, the county sends out the property tax bills, there's a line item generally for the Pid. We have a very high collection rate as a result, because people don't realize that, they just escrow for the entirety, and it gets, it can be included in your escrow payment. I'm not a tax expert, I'm not going to opine on whether.
So the, the, the homeowners in the Pids aren't using this like the mortgage or something else, and using that as a tax deduction on their annual?
Here's what I would tell you. A lawyer would probably say, gee, it's probably not tax-deductible, because it's not a tax, it's an assessment. It's been done for 40 years around the country, people have been writing it off as long as they've been doing it. We're not aware of anyone, you know, we're not tax experts. But, you know, they could, so, we, here's our tax bill, we deducted it. I don't think there's audits being done on property tax.
On the, on the Whisper Valley example, that was roughly 45 to 50 million. Do you know off the top of your head what that assessment is to a average homeowner?
On a, on a current, I'll, we have an agreement that we won't go above a certain percentage rate with the city, so, um, on a $300,000 home, it is probably $1,500 a year.
All right, and then last question or comment, and Eric, this maybe goes to what you were saying earlier, and something that I would love for staff in the city to, to think about as you guys advance these, these conversations, but totally agree that this is a mechanism to help support or work with the, um, impact fee concept. And so, uh, just to point out a question or comment, it, I may be wrong in this, but in my history here, really, Carruthers or South Carruthers was one of the few roads that, um, I saw the city really get out in front of any development on. For the most part afterwards, it's been reactionary infrastructure to, to backfill around development. So McEwen's an example of that, or something like that. So in some of these cases, um, you know, Patrick was talking about how we've got, you know, is this going to create an unfair advantage to the new guy compared to the old guy? And I would argue that, that's completely opposite of that, and that without something like this, you won't have those starts. So, um, one thing I would ask you all to take a look at, as you think about the road impact fees and that, what that phase cost is, or the totality of that cost. So let's pick on the Goose Creek area for a moment. If the Goose Creek area were to be taken out of the road impact fee equations, I don't see a scenario where the city goes and starts all of that infrastructure without development happening first. So if that's the case, why would those impact fees, or, I'm sorry, those costs be part of the impact fee equation? So as an alternative, you could say, that area of town, and I'm just picking on that, because I know it very well, but that area of town could be ripe for a Pid, at which point that infrastructure is put in and is, uh, complementary to the rest of the road impact fee structure around town. I think that what would also have to happen through that conversation is that you take a further look at the road impact fees, and probably bifurcate them more like the Parkland dedication into quadrants, as opposed to just having this blanket road impact fee system across the city. And then the last component of that would be to take a look at, um, removing some of the maintenance components of your road impact fee, and simply assessing the capacity. So if you've got an improvement at Cool Springs and Carruthers to add more turn lanes, how does that work as opposed to maintenance? And so I think Eric completely agree with this being a symbiotic relationship, and I would think that it may be a way to help lessen the overall, um, cost in the equation of the road impact fees, because without some of these areas, I don't, I don't see it developing without some help in that cost, so I'll leave with that.
Thank you, Adam. Eric, help me out with this, New Braunfels, Texas, where, Rick, you were, they're coming here on an inner-city visit.
You're visiting us in the fall.
Yeah, so, in the fall, so just, just to apply, Alan, I think you were next, and then Bev. And we have maybe about 10 minutes?
Okay. Don't blame us.
We'll learn.
No, no, I'm not happy with that, he owes me money.
Thanks, Vernon, this is, is a little bit more of a statement than a question, but, you know, I don't know about you guys, I don't have anything else scheduled for the next month or so with any other jurisdiction to talk about how we come together and tackle issues like this. So kudos to Franklin, they've always, they've always led that charge. Uh, they haven't been an anti-growth, but how do we accomplish it together? Uh, and then kudos to the development group that's here behind me, because they, I've watched them over the past three decades, build the infrastructure of this city and the tax base, and create the place that it is, working hand-in-hand with your elected officials and representatives. That said, um, you know, I think you had an ask, Patrick, uh, you know, what are, what are we looking for and what we're asking for? And I think the key, we're, we're kind of at a, a point where cost is bumping up against the ceiling, and it's either delaying or eliminating projects. And that's, that's what we're here to try to tackle. So I think the ask is to consider, and, and I don't disagree with what Scott's, uh, comments were earlier regarding taxes, but I think the ask is, consider another tool that helps these people that invest in your community to move projects forward. And as you build, as you move projects forward, and you build a house base, that helps everything, including your affordable housing actions. So I think considering it as a tool with everything else, including impact fees, and how that functions, so that these projects can actually get ground, move forward, and find out a way to make the city better.
A Pid, a Pid is not a panacea, it's not the answer to everyone's problems, um, it's got to be paid for. But it, it does lower the cost of capital, it's a part of a, generally, it's a solution that encompasses a multitude of ideas. All we're trying to suggest is, this is one idea that has been effective in a lot of other parts of the country, and given what's going on in this part of the country, I think y'all need more tools to help achieve all the mutual objectives. And we'll come talk to any city that wants to hear about these ideas. We want to be, quite frankly, we have altruistic, we want to be the consultant to developers in Tennessee who want to use these mechanisms, because you probably don't have anybody in Tennessee who understands them. We want to be that group. That's how we have an office in Austin because of that, so.
All right, Bev, last, ask the last question, I'll wrap up. Alan, thank you for your comments, because we're all together i- in this. And, um, I gave those four scenarios, I just, if it's appropriate, add on to what you said. It's what, and you mentioned some projects aren't moving forward, they're stalled. But the key is for our, for all of us, is what projects need to move forward to make sure Franklin continues to be this destination of choice? And that's the key, because any community can do anything. But what sets us apart is, I would offer, needs to be folded into this conversation going forward. And the policies that you mentioned that, we have the opportunity to set. Bev, and then I'll get you all out of here.
And, and it's not just destination of choice, uh, I agree with you, but it's also about the people that live here. We, we live here, and we have to make sure we're doing everything right for ourselves. I've got a number of, of quick points, and I'll make them real quick. Carruthers was one of the smartest things the city did, because we had a TIF over there, and building Carruthers out there brought the development to help pay that TIF off. That was smart, and we need to be more creative and forward-thinking to maybe do some of those things in the future. Understanding, and back to your point, Patrick, too, think, uh, it's about jurisdiction. And I think what they were saying is, we have to, uh, understand and educate at the local level before we can go to the legislators. I've been meeting with and talking with the legislators about this, wanting and pushing, and Vernon's sick and tired of hearing from me, to get Rich in here and to do this today, because it is about educating ourselves first, understanding it, and wrapping our heads around all this stuff, then taking it to the legislature, and, and finding out if we can have more tools in our toolbox that really help us. Trying to address the burdens of, we're trying really through this, to address the burdens of finance and credit and funding for, for these developers, and the, for the city to get what we need. Because it's, it's a win-win. This is what we're looking for anyway. And, um, and it very well may delay, but it's, it, it will eliminate, in this, in this economy and in this world that we live in today, can really eliminate more projects here. And it's not to say that we want all projects either, as well. And then the last thing I would say is that we should not try to make a Pid or a TIF or whatever acronym you want to pick up along the way, to solve all the challenges. But they are, um, they are in existence to address some of the very critical challenges that we have. And I think, uh, the more that we have, the better it is.
Yeah, I, I, let me just say a couple of things. One, what I tell my clients is, 90% of the, of the decision of whether the city or county will support a Pid or TERS or TIF for your project, is whether they want the project or not. Pretty basic. I, I, I said yesterday, I could bring the most beautiful mobile home park to some communities, it's not going to be approved no matter what. I mean, it's just, the, that's not what they want. So it's got to be what somebody wants, it's part of the process. We are trying, in the end, the users, whether they be homeowners, property owners, tenants, pay for everything. That's the way, that is the economics of real estate. But if we can lower the cost of, of doing things, it makes it more attractive for everybody, and that's what we're trying to solve for. So, thank you.
Thank you, so. Yeah, hey, great. I was going to say, and I am going to save the best for last, but let me just, uh, make sure we understand where we are and where we're going. I had mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. I had mentioned at the beginning of this meeting that within a few weeks or so, I'm going to set up another meeting to respond to what the board has asked staff and you all to do is prepare for the September 10th public hearing on implementing the updated road impact fees. There's a proposal before them that has two different options to phase in those impact fees. How does that play into, to this? And we'll have that discussion. And we have a couple of ideas received that we can share that maybe helps lessen that impact. We can also talk and build upon here, and I know Rachel will be a part of it, to see where do we go from here. This is too important not to keep some momentum going. We have Kell here, we have a legislature that's going to be gearing up and can we make, have some influence going forward? So I'll do that. The best for last, I want to thank Rachel and the NIOP group for bringing Rick here and Rick did an awesome job in my opinion even before when I spoke to him and even now, and I'm certain that he'll want to come back here and spend some time in Franklin since you and your wife like it so much. So thank again, another round of applause for Rick.